Probably nobody showed up, you're all confused.
Well, this council meeting order at 7:02 is standing for pledge to do.
For the agents of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ro call.
Michelle.
Roy Henry.
Mark Crutzer.
Ben Keel.
Bart Swanson to the administrator and the county attorney. Joe McHosk, our city developer. Justin Candace, our city engineer. Sean Durex, our city maintenance supervisor. Wendy Manson, our city clerk. And I have to add to the agenda. Open forum for grain sound committee and Chair Boyd. Boy Scout committee increase of $256.52 to Verizon Telephone. Report from Wright County Sheriff Department. And new bid in this, Roger Danby Lindy. We'll move on to... Approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second that motion with the additions.
Motion by Mark, second by Ben to approve the agenda. Ben, how do you vote?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Vote aye, motion carried five over. Then approval of the consent agenda. With the increase of $256.52 for Verizon Telephone.
Any questions? Go ahead.
And the report from Wright County Sheriff's Department.
I have a couple of questions, Wendy, Nate, Nate. Or actually, Justin. Were your fees on here for the $17,797? Is that all for the regional purpose? Is there anything else that's added, isn't it?
Yeah, there's a couple of them.
Yeah, I know, I know there's a few other things in there, just positive. I don't have them all in front of me, there's, you know, some general engineering services on there.
Some Rock Brook stormwater fees.
Oh yeah, Rock Brook stormwater.
Do you know how much that is, Wendy?
Yep.
Grading certificates are on there, review of grading certificates for new homes.
Rock Brook, between the two of them, two stormwaters down there, it was $3200.
This month?
Through June 3rd, through June 20th, from May through June are the bills. Little bit of general, like he said, which is grading certificates and things that we collect on the building permits. And then they review. Couple other things that they needed to look at. Pedestrian flasher review, sign retro reflectivities, those things, and then the regional.
Pedestrian flasher review, like that?
Pedestrian flasher needs review.
That was for the crosswalk flashing system down here at Center Avenue.
For $125. Correct? So, the crosswalk review, for you guys to go ahead and do that, how, why did you come up getting to that?
Why did you do that survey?
Well, it was just, it was just a little bit of research that we did to find, to look at other options for the crosswalk at all. And compared to memo, there's a memo on your packet today, looking at other options to that system. So it's been a long time, I think it's an hour or something like that, so.
I know, but my question to you is, why did you do that in the first place?
Uh, because we discussed, the mayor had asked about it, and then we discussed it at staff, and we decided that we would present some information to council and see if the council wanted to... Move anything, move further with anything. And we searched it in further, and they didn't further, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then let's have the report from now, Wright County. Motion to approve that. Consent agenda, or not? I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Lloyd, second by Ben to approve the consent agenda. How do you vote? Auto.
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Vote aye, motion carried five over. Then we'll move on to the Wright County Sheriff's Department report.
Evening, Mayor, council members, city staff, and Deputy Christopher with the Wright County Sheriff's Office. I spend most of my time patrolling the Montrose, Weyland area in the evenings. I was asked to come here for two reasons this evening specifically, speak, one would be our new ticketing system that we're going to. It's gonna be an e-charging ticketing system that actually does them electronically online, and you print off the tickets in the squad cars. Unfortunately, I can't give any updates as to the progress of that. Our, our administration is going to a new records management system, and it's a million dollar system plus, that they're still in the beginning stages of establishing. And I can't speak much more than that. Captain Hoffman would be the one that would speak directly to that. Do I have any other questions specifically on that, in regards to the new e-ticketing records management system?
I, uh, look, I'm interested in that because of the, the increase that we're gonna be able to get, including from that report when it's available.
Absolutely, it'll be really slick. I noticed just in my tenure with Sheriff's Office, switching from paper to actual reports, one thing it did, is it, reports getting to investigators took two weeks sometimes, now they get there the next day frequently. Sometimes it takes two days if their case goes back up. I have a feeling it's gonna be similar with tickets, reports on tickets specifically are gonna come much faster. Second reason I'm here today, just to give an update, everything has been going pretty good. Couple of things that I've been dealing with a lot recently because of the heat, a lot of people aren't walking around later at night. Frequently stop and talk to people that are just walking in the streets, and I haven't had too many issues. A lot of the juvenile, juvenile problems kinda stopped right away. They haven't been leaving the trailer park as often as they used to. They, sometimes we go up Casey's and get food and pop, and we put the kibosh on that, made sure that they knew that that was not something that they'd be doing. A lot of the damage to properties that we can get during the summer months because of juveniles being out late at night, that hasn't happened like it has happened in the past. We stayed pretty active, but as far as those type of complaints, they're down from what I would normally think that they would be. In addition, the only other thing that relatively recent is, there've been some issues with people watering through yards late at night around morning, morning off Highway 12 in Buffalo, Lattinville area. Also, we're getting kind of information that people are messing with the fruit stand next to Red Scapling, and since I drive by there so often in the daytime hours, and there's so much traffic, it's likely it's happening during the overnight hours. And it also coincides with around the time of bar close, so I've been kinda suspicious of anyone going through backyards in that area, it's something that we're keeping our eye on. Other than that, I don't have anything else directly to report, things have been going pretty well.
What hours are you guys normally out here?
I am.
Daytime is time, well, February?
I'm specifically in town from 6:30 in the evening until 2:30, 2:30 in the morning. There's also a daytime park that's specifically in the town from 10:30 to 2:30. We also have area cars that roll through, so during those timeframes, you can get two or three cars in town, just driving through and ducking enforcement, in addition to the traffic we have. But those are the general hours that people have a car in town, pretty much unless I'm here at the jail, so.
And you've been taking some of them off?
I have been taking quite a few of them off.
So, are you seeing a lot of juvenile vandalism, or no?
No, I'm not, I took, I did a dumb ditch about two nights ago, and I actually was thinking about, first time in about three weeks I've taken a juvenile complaint of any kind, other than me finding juveniles in cars or finding them watering toilets. That's the first complaint I think I've taken in three weeks.
So there's like a lot of vandalism for our parks?
Okay. Other, other than the park problem, which has been ongoing all summer, uh, yeah, that's correct, that's been an ongoing one all summer. I haven't heard anything about vandalism, I've just heard that the kids there are getting in fights, some of the older kids are picking on younger kids. Specifically vandalism, I might talk to you outside the meeting about that, because I haven't heard anything specific about vandalism.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Okay, now the next thing I'd like to bring up is conditioning use permit for 601 Nelson Boulevard, Butch Donahue.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we have a request before you from John and Mary Donahue, they are owners of the parcel at 601 Nelson Boulevard. They are requesting a conditional use permit for that property to allow farm supply store with an outdoor sales lot in the B2 Highway Commercial District. So per our zoning ordinance, section 1005-3, there are criteria in which we must look at in order to grant the conditional use permit. Planning Commission met on July 16th and reviewed the request, also conducted a public hearing, following published notice and notice of property owners within 250 feet. And they are suggesting, recommending rather, conditional approval of the request. And maybe before I get into a lot of details, since we have the applicants on before us tonight, I'll give them an opportunity to speak so they can grab a seat again. Butch and Tony Donahue.
I'm John Donahue, I had a stroke basically, so. Hey. Oh, uh, if you guys see me, I brought them up.
Did they? They've seen everything, everything you provided, they have got.
Okay, I'm John Donahue, and we've been in business together for 40 years, and I'm like, basically mainly in the Delaware area, I'm a sports business guy. We've just solved those businesses and have owned this big building, property for quite a few years now, and are looking to start back up in something else again. We've been doing some, I've been in a lot of big horse racing facilities, so we, we'll need for animal shelters, passionated and stuff like that, there's a lack of that around here in the different stores, make sure they're supplying it, so. We're looking into building some of that stuff on top of some equipment sales, maybe some truck repair sales, and everything else. That's our history, that's where we kinda wanna start with, to get things rolling. We don't say those type of things, so, to generate some cash for the stuff we're planning to have, but sales don't suck. And some service or something like that. If you guys want to feel down, you can ask questions.
I'd be happy to review a more complete staff report from the planning commission and all.
If you guys can have Stephen Joey on.
Yeah, let Joey get us the details. Let Joey get us the details.
There's a seat right here.
So as noted, in our Highway Commercial District, W2, we have a list of what types of uses are permitted, and which types of uses are allowed by a conditional use permit. And outdoor sales lots are allowed via a conditional use permit. And that gives the planning commission, the city council, and residents now the opportunity to at least review and comment on the proposed layout design. So I think it's page 41 of your packet includes the proposed layout. And then it's on the screen as well, it illustrates Highway 12 in the front, and it's, and it's free to utilize the same access points off of Highway 12 that currently exist. And the building that is currently in place from Candace Works will be multi-use, there's two, Candace Works remaining in the facility, and then the farm supply store operating out of the west side of the facility. It is proposed as part of this project that your second request on the agenda related to is a variance for the off-street parking paving. Currently, the entire lot is gravel in nature, and they are proposing to improve the front portion along Highway 12 to include asphalt paving. The portion that's outlined in the darker shade, so the sales lot adjacent to Nelson Boulevard, our highway hall, will be paved along with the parking spaces immediately adjacent to the building. Parking that's illustrated to the right, sort of to the east of the building, will be on the gravel parking lot, so that's the second request this evening. But tonight, we're looking specifically on this request of the conditional use permit, and planning commission reviewed this and fair enough for resolution for your consideration. They have found it is insistent on the town plan, it is compatible with the adjacent land uses, it, the use conforms with the standards identified in the code. It can be accommodated with our existing public services, and the traffic projected to be generated is within the capabilities of Highway 12, which is a principal on our cereal. They are recommending this be conditioned, approval on the parking lot, the tumbus pavement being subject to the city engineers' review and approval, and just in that review of the plans. That the site grading, drainage, and erosion control plans be submitted for review and approval by the city engineer. That any modifications to water sewer services that are needed to accommodate the proposed farm supply be at the expense of the owner. In order to minimize the impact on adjacent residential properties, perimeter landscaping be installed in residential properties in the rear block line. If the site's westerly access is shared with property to the west, formal via Raisha Hoth, that a cross-access easement be executed and recorded with Wright County Reporter's Office. So we'll be waiting on that document. That any changes to exterior lighting conform to section 1016-8 of code. That outdoor sales lot adjacent to Highway 12 be limited to farm supply equipment, it would be vehicles. Any other non-perishable outdoor sales would be confined to the rear of the lot, so if it's fencing etc., that would be behind, but we would not want hay or perishable items on the site. That all site signage needs signed regulations of the ordinance. The applicant work with MINDOT on any right-of-way permits that are required. The addition to the west side of the building as proposed, though each have suffered damage to the facility, that it be constructed of material and exterior finish consistent and complimentary to the existing facility. And that this conditional use permit is conditioned upon granting of the variance for the off-street parking requirements. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions right now.
Anybody got any questions that need answering? So we're just confirming, Joe?
Looking for a motion to approve the resolution on page 42, according to the other packet, additionally approving the conditional use permit.
Make a motion to approve this. For 600, conditional use permit for 601 Nelson Boulevard.
Resolution 2014.
2014, resolution dash 09, 2014 dash 10?
We're just doing nine.
Nine, no, okay. Second that. Motion by Henry, second by Mark, to approve resolution 2014 dash 09. Mark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Vote aye, motion carried five over. We'll move on to resolution 2014 dash 10. For conditional approval of variance for off-street parking paving requirements at 601 Nelson Boulevard.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, and the audience, the second part of this request, again, for the farm supply store, is a request for a variance from our off-street parking requirements. Within our zoning ordinance, it requires that any parking space, driveways, etc., be serviced with materials suitable to control dust, including asphalt, concrete, cobblestone, or paving brick. The applicant is requesting a variance of these design standards, and similar to the last request in the same illustration, page 49 of this packet. Illustrates the area in which they're proposing they would allow to retain as gravel parking. And again, it would be something to improve the situation right now, as we sit on an aerial on the street, as entered its gravel around the perimeter of the facility. The portion that is immediately adjacent to the highway, the way would be paved with asphalt. The planning commission at their public hearing discussed whether or not to require the perimeter curving better, felt that due to the size and scope of the site, they would recommend that be waived as well as part of this variance. That only the paving be required in the front portion, and remainder of the lot be retained as the gravel, feeling it would still improve aesthetics and the stormwater runoff. Within our zoning ordinance, section 1007-4, we identified the criteria for granting a variance, and those findings are found on pages 44 and 46 of your packet. Planning commission, again, conducted a public hearing following published notice, and is recommending conditional approval of the variance. And three conditions are proposed as a part of this, and that resolution may be found on page 50 of your packet. Conditions are that parking lots located in front of the existing building contain the tumbus pavement, to be subject to the city engineers' review and approval. That stormwater plans be submitted for engineer review and approval, and that this variance is conditioned upon the approval of conditional use permit, which you just acted on favorably. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
The area that you guys are asking to remain gravel to the east side, is there ever intention in the future of maybe paving that, or just the intention is now just to keep it gravel?
Yeah, eventually, I know we're gonna keep it gravel, as the business grows, or we have an idea in the future that possibly if somebody in the retail business would like to come in.
Okay.
Maybe we change the lot line, split it north and south, instead of east or, east or west, instead of north and south.
Okay.
And have the possibility of selling that lot off to the east.
Okay.
So I didn't want to spend a part of money on asphalt and water. If this business takes off, it'll definitely be something we'll do in the future.
Okay.
We'll keep that lot, for the remainder of your time.
Okay.
And finally, Mr. Mayor and council, just want to, on behalf of the EDA, thank them for investing in community and bringing their business here, and they have done some very huge work with us, so just wanted to acknowledge and thank them for bringing business here.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 2014 dash 10. For the variance for off-street parking. Motion by Mark, second by Michelle, to adopt resolution 2014 dash 10 for off-street parking. Michelle, how do you vote?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Vote aye, motion carried five over.
Thank you very much.
You sell the Evergreens yet?
What?
You sell the Evergreens off that Boulevard yet?
No, I'm there, I give you some of it, I'm moving.
Well, I put the word out to a couple of people for you to see.
I was just saying, I moved, you're gonna cut it out. I didn't want to cut it down.
Yeah, you're nice, cut down.
Now I gotta move.
Thank you, Butch.
Thank you, sir.
Art is missed. Thanks for coming, Art. Take care.
Yeah.
We'll see you, Bart.
Yeah, bye-bye.
Yeah, bye-bye. Administration, state demographic, population estimate.
So in your packet, there's a letter from Minnesota State Demographer. And our, our population estimates are always usually higher than the group use for the building permits. So, they estimate our population in high school had 3,000 or... And today, we had about 16 new homes in the town. And we can't release this until July, so, I, I have it a while, but I can't talk about it publicly till after. Anyway, that's our estimate of the population.
Thank you, Bart.
Just a second. Bart, I remember last year, something changed every month over that.
Over 25 hundred. The next, the next jump would be by 1,000.
Thank you.
Okay, then we'll move on to employee review, Dan Menso.
At our last personnel meeting, council members Otto, Keel, Sean, Garrett, and myself, we reviewed them. And he's pretty rich with that dress, and he recommended a promotion to maintenance worker, two feet from increase to 1814 an hour, against July 27th. Dan was hired at an entry level position, he brings a lot of mechanical background, he's a diesel mechanic, and after being here six months, we feel like he's really working out well, and he brings... six months, we feel like he's really working out well, and he brings a lot of skill to the city that we didn't have before. Very pleased with his work, he's a team player, wants to go along with everybody, he's hard working hard, very dependable, and more happy to recommend that promotion and increase.
I make a motion to approve Dan's entry state working.
I'll second.
Motion by Michelle, second by Lloyd to approve Dan. Ladies, Johnson, would you vote?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye motion carried by vote. Okay, city council, want to react to this report?
I didn't get a copy of Lloyd's.
I don't believe Lloyd turned this in.
Okay, sorry, so that it's not.
Right.
Anything that would attend to Lloyd? Was there any meanings that you had?
No. Where are council members?
I just attended the parking recording, that was discussion with National Guard that was coming up. I don't believe we have, yeah, so just discussion.
I was invited to that Lake Side Oasis in Buffalo up there on top of the hill, it was the only mirror around her that got an invitation from them that couldn't believe it. And that really is a beautiful setup for anybody to see, to go look at, it's really nice.
And what was that?
That Lake Side Oasis up on top of the hill.
Is that open house?
Yep. Really nice.
That, was that like an open house to the public, or?
No, it was invitation.
Right.
The first bunch. And I got an invitation to that, I couldn't believe it, it was open, you know?
I, I do think that is an honor, but I kind of wonder why you charged the city for that?
Well, they had open house the week after that, you know?
Right, but it was an invite to a memorial hospice center, and I'm wondering why that would be a charge to the city as a meaning?
I don't know, but it was really nice, and camel from Waverly's the head chair for that whole episode up there and everything. Just camel.
So you, you are aware that you charged the city for that?
Because I was surprised I got the invitation for it, it was really nice.
I have the shot to charge the city for an invite, but. And then, I have some other question I noticed, like you met with Justin about the streets on the front of the White Hart?
Yeah.
And you charged for that also?
Well, I brought it up, and the street's got to get fixed. And something is going to be done about it, I'm not arguing about it, but the street's got to be repaired out there because the trucks are getting damaged on the back door.
I agree with you on that, but that's our job to do that, not to charge the city to meet with the engineer.
I appreciate what I can do, I'm not arguing about nothing.
I attended the Montrose Day Celebration of the Year last night, things are coming together nicely, looks like everything's kind of set up and ready to go here for this weekend, so hopefully we can see as many people out there as possible, should be a good time.
If there's no other reports, let's move on to engineering, regional park grading update prepared by Justin King.
Thank you, Mayor and council, we have went through and completed the overall design for the grading portion of the regional park. I've included in your packet there a figure showing, showing the closed grades, maybe a little difficult to read in your, in your packet there, but essentially, the, the site, as you know, varies in elevation a significant amount from, from east to west, as well as from basically the area where the proposed ball fields are at the highest point, and then over by the, by the creek is here's the lawnmower. There's a, there is a significant amount of grading and dirtwork that'll need to be done with the project. We split it up into four different sections when we were looking at the design, and one, one section, what we call section one, was over, would be the corner sort of between a rattle bowl lane and north of basket lane, in the area where the community gardens are currently placed, or the individual community gardens are placed. That's the area that's slated for future, future buildings, whether it be like a community center, or civic center, city hall, city offices, fire station, things of that nature. So that was, that was area one, and area two was just to the west of that, where the existing lift station is, and where the proposed soccer fields and hockey rink is. And then area three is the area basically west of the roadway, where the proposed tennis court is, and proposed pond, proposed basketball court, sort of that, in that area. And in that also, area three includes the roadway and the parking lots. And then the last area, area four, is, is to the northeast corner of the site where the two proposed ball fields are. What we, the reason we did that is we broke up into sections to kind of determine if, if we could sort of balance one section at a time for, for earthwork or dirtwork, so that the city could perhaps grade just a portion of the site, balance that area out without having to grade the entire site. And, and what it amounts to is really, that's, that's not really very attainable to do that. The, the entire site, in order to be the most cost-effective way of doing it, the entire site needs to be graded at one time. It does involve carrying a lot of excess material from the ball field area over to areas two and three, which is the area where the hockey rink, soccer fields are, tennis court is, ponds, that area, and the, and the, as well as the parking lots and roadway. Now, area one, which is the area where the, the future buildings are, civic center of that nature, that we left out of the equation, trying to balance that site in and of itself, and we can, we can do that fairly well. And with, with that area being probably more unknown for future plans than any other area of the park, I think it's best just to leave that site alone for right now and not do anything there, because it's going to be very highly dependent upon building layout, and we just haven't went into enough detail, you know, discussion and, and planning to know really what's going to be in there exactly. So any grading to do in that area is, is going to be a guess really at this point. But areas two through four really should be done at one time, like I said, that's the most cost-effective way of doing it. So that's that. Guess as far as the design goes, I, you know, it's there, if you have specific questions you can ask me. It does work out fairly well, there's some, there's some steeper grades in some spots, but everything's at a mowable grade, there's nothing that's not, not at a mowable grade, which means like a four to one slope, so for every one foot in elevation you come up or go down, it's four feet, and four feet is horizontal distance. So that's considered, considered an unmaintainable slope for mowing and things of that nature. No retaining walls, we were kind of wondering about whether we would add a retaining wall up against the west side of the Herzog property there, adjacent to the park, and, and we can, we can get by without putting a retaining wall in there, so that's, that's good. I think Mr. Herzog was a little concerned about that, so we're able to, able to get by without that. I did, in the memo there, I laid out just an estimate of cost if the council did want to proceed with, with this now or in the future. The, like I said, the design, the grading portion of the design is done, if it were to be put out for public bid, and it would have to be, for the higher contractor to do it, being it's over a hundred thousand dollar cost, you, it did that go up to the public bidding process, so full preparation of, of full bidding documents, including plans and specification that we prepared, estimated cost for that is twenty-five thousand. The estimated construction cost for the, for the grading portion, and that would include seating of the site as well, is four hundred thousand. And then the estimated construction administration, inspection, testing, surveying costs is about thirty thousand, leaving total estimated project cost of about four hundred fifty-five thousand. That's if you were to go out and, and bid it up publicly, and obviously that's an estimate depending on how bid numbers come in. We have seen a little bit of uptick in, in prices lately, there's a fair amount of work out there, but if you were to leave the schedule flexible, that would be your best, your best way to get the best price for it. Another thing that I checked on that is not included in my memo, is I did call the National Guard, and I've had a couple, a couple phone conversations with the guard, two minutes regarding this, and seeing if they could, could use this site or do some grading for us as a training exercise. And I did recently speak with, with somebody, and they did say that, that they have done projects like this in the past, as you're aware. Their, their comment to me was, it, it was easier to do it ten or fifteen years ago than it is today, but it's certainly within the realm of possibilities. They are going to be forwarding this additional information, and it's going to be a formal, basically it's going to be a formal submittal that I have to submit to them, and it's a community, can't remember exactly what the terminology was, it's a community request for, for services essentially. So that's the first step is to submit a community request for, for their services to do this. And then from that, they review it and see if it's something that's feasible for them to do. So, you know, based on that additional information that I have, I think it would be worthwhile to hold off on this for, for a month. We're not going to be doing any grading this year yet anyway, and, you know, if, if we can get the guard to do this, that's a huge loss savings. Even if there is a cost that the city has to front, you know, in discussing it with them, their, one of their concerns that up front was the distance, that their, their units would have to travel, or, you know, maybe stay overnight or gas back and forth. Well, a little bit of gas for transportation, lodging would be, would be cheaper than four hundred thousand dollars, that's the thing, so. So I think that, that's something we need to investigate a little bit further here. I guess I'd maybe be looking for council's direction to, to direct me to continue discussions with the guards and submit a formal requo, community service request.
Yeah, I think we're all in agreement that, that the way we want you to proceed is the community request.
That's what I would say, continue and see what the guards got to say, and take it from there after we give an explanation from them. We need a motion to have Justin get approval from the guard.
I'll make a motion for Justin to continue working with the guard and filling out the paperwork to see if they will, the community request assistance on this project, would be. Second.
Motion by Ben, second by Mark to have Justin get more information from the guard to see about the landscaping. Ben, would you vote?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
I vote aye motion carried by vote.
Who's second with that motion?
I.
Mark?
Mark.
Okay, we'll move on to center avenue and south crosswalk improvement information.
Yes, I, as I mentioned earlier, this is a follow-up, the mayor had asked some questions about the fairly recently installed pedestrian crosswalk system that's installed in the city of Maple Plain and Cross Truck Habit, well, you may have noticed that as you go across here. What that is, is it's a, it's an actual, like a signal arm, mast arm that looks over the highway with flashing two flat, or three, I'm sorry, three lights, three flashing lights, right above the, actually above the highway. What that system is called, is it's called the Hawk system, High Intensity Activated Crosswalk Signal System. And, and it's a somewhat of a newer concept that's been developed in the last few years. We have done a couple of these systems, and MINDA has, has approved them in certain locations on the same highway system. There is a, there is a study that needs to be done in order to determine if it's justified at that location, and most typically, they've been used and they've worked the best usually at mid-block cross, or mid-block locations, so not at intersection, but more at mid-block locations. Look at the one on Maple Plain, that's kind of where that's at, it's a little bit, little bit funny there on the intersection layout, but, but it's, it's essentially considered a mid-block crossing. What you add at intersection may involve some additional improvements. So, you know, I, I don't know how well the, the one there is, basically what we find with those types of, of crosswalk systems that's in there now, which is the yellow flashing medium, is really getting people to adhere to the, to the law on that, you know, and enforcement of that. I know it's difficult to enforce that, but, you know, the law reads that, that the motor is supposed to stop when there is a person there ready to make the crossing across the highway.
Well, how much would that cost, Justin, just change them yellow lights and put red in there?
Um, that is not, that is not approved.
Can't you do that?
No, you cannot do that. That is, MINDA, does not approve MINDA.
Well, it's to wait till somebody gets caught up there, and I guess, and see what Ben says then. Oh, I appreciate what you did, but it's nasty because of what I see going through there.
So like I said, if it's, you know, it's not a simple, not a simple thing of changing the laws in there, the average cost of that Hawk system is anywhere from a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars, so it's very substantial, so.
I just like, you ever find out anything like over on Guard Field for crosswalk from MINDA, with them people coming out of Rose Haven, with them electric scooters crossing the road over there? And there's no sign there that says wheelchair, handicap, or nothing?
Um, the cross, I did not look back at the files to see if we did a.
Hasn't ever been said about it. You know, since I brought it up about four years ago, but nothing ever seems like it gets accomplished. And there's about five people in Rose Haven that's got these electric scooters that cross the highway from Guard Field over to the south side of the road. There are no signs there that says anything.
Is there, is there a, I think MINDA stance on that is they don't like the, they like to keep the number of crosswalks down as much as possible, so I know their question to me is going to be, what, what is causing them to have to cross at that location versus crossing at the center avenue?
Yeah, but we only got to in Waverly's, got about five or six on that way, twelve where the people cross, why should it be cut down? And it's the same district, got a brain-erred factor, why should we take them boot for it? There's no reason they can't go to crosswalk too.
That's a forty-five mile an hour speed limit, so I don't know how they would, if they're not slowing down at a thirty mile an hour speed limit, forty-five mile an hour speed limit, I'm afraid they're going to get run over.
Yeah.
But I think when we did contact with, I think that was when they said they wouldn't put a crosswalk in the forty-five mile an hour speed limit.
As I said, I seen one dumb Chevrolet pickup, and this lady come across the highway, he went around on the sidewalk, and over the mailboxes, and back off the sidewalk, and back down on the highway. If he'd hit hers, she'd have been cleared down the way.
They need to cross.
That's what it's just applying.
They go down, wow, so like Justin said.
That's the way they've been crossing for a long time since they've been in Rose Haven.
Is it a crosswalk or walk path, there's a, on that side there?
On that side, yeah, but on the south side, they've come across the highway. That's just like your cable outfit, for an instant, I'll tell you. Cable outfit, when I crossed Highway twelve, then you could permission from MINDA, so MINDA turned around and come back and find the cable outfit. When a guy comes through here with a big green elevator, and he hooked that cable, and he was going to clear down twenty-five, with the cable dragging down the road, and the highway was pulled down. There's no common sense to it. Nothing we can do, I guess, so. Wait and see, that's all we can do, see what happens. And I don't want to see it, but. And I don't want to see it, but... So, I guess, move on to the finance, second quarter update, Wendy.
In your packets is just an update for the second quarter, this is through June, so we're halfway through the year. Everything is on track as far as revenue expense. Um, we've received our first half of our tax settlement from Wright County, but our LGA from the state just came in in July, so that's not included in here yet. Our enterprise funds, if you're looking at any of the six hundred accounts, which is our water, sewer, those are always a month behind, so they look a little lower than everything else. So far this year through June, we had ten new homes, building permits, our building permits for new homes. Um, on the expenditure side, there's nothing out of the ordinary, um, just to note that we do pay our debt service funds, which is our bonds. We always pay those in February and August, and February is when the majority of the principal payments are made, so those are a little higher. Other than that, we're doing just fine. So I don't think I have any questions, otherwise I'll move on to the next item.
Wendy, Mark and Rick.
We didn't have a Park and Rick meeting because it was on the same night as National Night Out, so I did, um, put a little update in your packets on National Night Out. We started at five-thirty till eight. Um, we didn't quite make it till eight with the ice cream, we ran out of ice cream before that, but we did have enough hot dogs. I'm guessing there was probably close to three hundred people there, at least. The KRWC roadshow was there and did, um, entertained everyone with music and games, the fire department was present, had all their trucks out for people to go through. Wright County Sheriff's Department came with their K-nine unit, and they had a dog here, that everybody could play with, and, and they were showing different things with the dog. I don't know if they actually did any, any demonstration, I don't guess. Trailblazer was here with their buses, they had a couple buses here to start with, and then one had to leave and go away early, but, um, they did keep one bus here and gave people rides all throughout the night, they took people out, gave a ride in their buses. So we, um, ice cream, root beer floats, um, the ice cream and the root beer, and the napkins, and most of the hot dog ones were all donated. So with KRWC and the, um, the rest of the food, our expenditures was five-eighty-eight-seventy-nine. We received about three hundred dollars in donations, so the difference was two-eighty-eight-seventy-nine. Um, that's going to be covered from the money we have left already from last year, so we didn't incur any additional expenses and... And I'd like to, um, last thing I have on here is I want to thank the Montrose Lions, um, Montrose Clark Station, Casey's, Fred's Cafe, the Ugly Bar, Buffalo Cup Store, Buffalo Target, and General Mills for their donations, and also the Montrose Fire Department, Wright County Sheriff's Department, KRWC, and Trailblazer for their participation. It was a great turnout. Thank you.
Move on to planning and zoning reservation of Gerald Lamb.
Yeah, we need, uh, Gerald Lamb, uh, turned in his resignation, uh, earlier this year, but we hadn't met, so, um, what I need is a motion from the City Council to accept his resignation.
Can I come off and talk to the Senate, Joe, and ask his resignation?
Well, second that motion. Motion by Michelle, second by Ben to accept Gerald Lamb's resignation. Mark, would you vote?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I'd vote aye, motion carried, five vote.
The next item is, um, about the bylaws of planning and zoning. It allows the planning commission to have up to seven members. Currently, we have four, and one will be moving, so we'll be down to three. So what we're recommending is that we, we, um, just run with five members at this time. So then we'll advertise our two members. So, I'm looking for a motion to, for the City Council to set the membership at five.
I make a motion to change the bylaws of planning and zoning from seven members to five members?
Second. Motion by Michelle, second by Mark. Ben, would you vote?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
I'd vote aye, motion carried, five vote. Okay. We already done the butches, so we'll move on to old business, refit exercise program update, Jenny Nelson.
I don't think she's here. Did you guys hear anything from her? I, Wendy, you talked to her.
I, she called and asked if, um, whereabouts the agenda they were going to be, and we told her under old business, around seven-thirty.
She had a class in Gasol or someplace.
Yeah, so unless she's still coming, huh?
She might still be coming. As a matter of fact, a few cars told me, maybe. Has she given you anything?
No, I, she hasn't given me any kind of update as to how they've done or anything, so...
Okay, so then we move on to new business, Rock and Andrew Lindy.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I am here with two of my neighbors, Mr. Jan Pharoah and Steve Garnier. We are wondering why the road, uh, the Crowfoot and the White Hill was gated off. What reason? I've been searching for a reason when I find them. Uh, and now, my granddaughter's bus had to turn around in my driveway and back out halfway up the hill, which I think is very unsafe, and, uh, neighbors are concerned about that. And before it was the bus more traffic, uh, there never was traffic on that way. Who was that?
Who, uh, who closed it?
The city.
The city then? And who owns the property?
Um, Source Capital, that's my ex-own's property. And they originally guaranteed it. There was a condition of the plat, when the plat was developed, there was a regulation of the fire department and, uh, that approved as a condition of the plat. And there was a barricade installed when it was built, and I don't know who took the barricade down, but, um, we had been asking Source to put a second lift of the tumulus in, and it came to their attention the barricade was removed, and they were unhappy about that, so we put the barricade back up. Also at the time-
What was the name of the company?
Source.
Do you have the phone number?
No.
Okay.
Um, also, and the owner, the president of Source was coming out this past week to look at the roads. Um, also, at the time, um, there was discussion between the two cities and the township that that would remain closed until that property was annexed to the city away from the development was, um, built. Because of the ground road, the township did not want to maintain the road in any additional traffic.
Well, we went to the township meeting, and they have no records of anything.
Well, perhaps that wasn't the board.
Oh, I think the one member was the board, because they were here at the meeting, and they were pretty much escorted out at a council meeting.
Well, I don't think that your member's correct, I don't believe that.
No, that's what they, that's what they told us.
Well, you were at that meeting as well.
I don't remember that, I didn't go to that meeting. But anyway, eight years, and that road is open, now it's closed.
Well, you live in the township, and it's a city road.
I think it's full. I did hope.
I contacted the bus company.
The matter, Roger, is that we have, it's the plat agreement that we're trying to stick to, and the, the company that, that owns the land right now, that still hasn't put their final-
Yeah, but then they're growing there eight years like that.
Right. But we, we don't want them getting to the point where they're saying, hey, so many buses are going through there that you guys are-
Two buses.
It doesn't make any difference, if I own the property, and I was having trouble coming up with the money to, to put the final level on that, on the par. It's part of the agreement that the city has, is the right thing to do? Yes. There was always a barricade out there, the barricade's gone.
Uh, I know, barricade, the most design was laying inside, it wasn't up. So...
So it was always an intention to have that road closed? And it's finally what you-
And it corroded, I wrote it, where it's not on it was before.
Well, I think it even started off that you didn't, you weren't to have developed the increase, the potentially increased traffic, but now that you've chewed on it a bit, it works a little, it works very good for you as far as-
We don't, we still don't have that much traffic, isn't it, traffic on the road?
It works good for you for, as far as the bus goes, and, you know, not have to turn around.
Yes, I look for safety.
I understand that.
And, uh, you know, sometimes the old saying is, tough to treat a cold dog in the tricks, you know, because, uh, we're used to that for so long, and all of a sudden, ding, no messing. It's, uh, well, I'd like to find out the number from this bank that I am going with on my top numbers, if I can get that from somebody.
The driver says she hasn't, in the office.
I have, but I don't know.
Okay. I shall stop up and get it. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
I don't know, raise your hand.
Can you say anything about that?
Sure.
Go ahead, come on up.
My name's Jan Pharoah. We've lived out there for, I've been out there for thirty-eight years. It's, the barricade that you're talking about was just a temporary two-by-four on a smart or something, it disappeared about first day of it up there. But granted, I heard that that wasn't supposed to be any element on the Crowfoot Avenue until the land actually was developed. But it's been being used for eight years. We live on Dead End, it's just another way in and out of there in case there's an emergency. I don't know how the fire department feels about it, but if there's a gate there, if there, if there is an emergency, they have to open up the gate. I mean, we got along for years with no access, but it's pretty nice to know that you got another way in and out of that Dead End. The bus school has been going through there for several years. Uh, Steve has been driving through there several years with his bus. The Wright County Sheriff's Department has been going through there on a regular basis when you're making a rounds, you come up our driveway. I mean, it's just something that, that's beneficial to a few people, I just can't see any reason to shut it down. And whoever owns the, supposedly owns the land, I mean, did they tell you to put the gate up, or, or what was the story there?
That was part of the fire, and that, uh, I, do you have that copy here, Mark?
Yes.
Well, but you, you, you do admit that there was a barricade there originally, correct?
Just a temporary.
But, but there was a barricade there, correct?
Yes, a temporary.
Well, that, that's-
There, there, I've been walking for seven or eight years.
Right, I, I, I understand what you're saying, but it's our job as City Council to protect the city, and, and if there is a plat agreement that we're supposed to be adhering to until that's changed, that this is what we have to go by. You, you can take a, read right here, um, number three, property access from Crowfoot Avenue shall be prohibited. Right here, you're writing on number three. This, this is part of the plat agreement. I did brought a copy of that too. Right, right on their lighter, um, bill.
Well, who, who made it, I mean, all of a sudden, after eight years, why it has come off that?
I think, I explained that a little earlier, the city's been, the city's been asking Source Capital, there's a second lift of the tumulus that's never been put on, and the city's been asking them to put that lift of the tumulus on, and that conversation I heard about the barricade.
Well, if that's such an important way to put up that golf course up there and critically stop the traffic, that's, I mean, and you have-
You can't, you can't take that piece of paper, that's my original.
I mean, you're not worried about the road, you shouldn't have put it in a golf course there, just creating traffic yourself. Well, that's all I've got to say about this. We, we went out and talked to the county commissioners, and just like Roger said, they have no qualms about cars coming out on Crowfoot Avenue. And they said too, that they had never, never anybody say that they didn't want to take care of the road. They, uh, we, like I said, we talked to the township board, one of them came out there and looked at it, and they thought it was kind of ridiculous to disclose after all these years. We talked to a county commissioner, and they, and he said, granted, there's nothing if, if Montrose makes a decision to close the gate, that's probably good. But another thing, uh, no, I don't know if this is gospel or not, but one of the concerned people, I had talked to, uh, Steve Burke, he's the Wright County-
I know him.
-emergency lawyer director. His opinion was anytime you shut down a way of getting out of a place, it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense. That, that was his opinion. Now whether that's true or not, or what went party totally, because like I say, right now, if there happens to be an emergency, there's no way in and out for us on that Dead End. I mean, we've all, it's, we've all used it for all these years, that was just, and then another person said that, well, as long as it's been used for all these years, can they actually close it? And I'd ask them something else, I don't know, I think you ought to put it if they wanted to. But that's all I've got to say about this.
Did I get a copy of that also? I'll talk to-
Is there, did, did any indication by the, uh, Source owners ship them? Have they come out?
I have talked to them.
Okay.
I talked to them a week ago, very soon.
Okay, one more question, if they, in your opinion, if they would agree to the, the last lift or the next lift of the tumulus, that, is it possible then with that lift, in that condition being that as far as the, the road being finished? And could the plat agreement be changed? Could the, Mark, could we change their recommendations to as far as being-
I don't, I can't really answer that, because the matter of, you know, I understand that these guys have been to the township meeting-
Sure.
-but that conversation was with the township board and the city away from the other time. You know, I don't know the legalities of changing the plat-
I mean, everybody, everybody would have to be involved in that conversation.
Right, and as, at this time, the plat has been approved or accepted by the city, so the roads aren't really ours anymore.
Steve Garnier, I live on the end of Crowfoot, Dead End Road. Um, I've been back there since seventy-eight. I got two concerns, uh, my wife works the night, she comes home ten-thirty at night, and every Friday or Saturday night, there's a bunch of kids, they were sitting top of the gate last Friday, and they, they go down in the ditch, I can show you the tracks, they go, they go around that, that gate, that gate's, they're going to go around that gate. They're gonna go around that gate. They feel like there's tracks in the ditch. Somebody's gonna get hurt back there. And so they, and they come back to my Dead End Road. And another concern with Roger, I've been driving a bus for forty-five years. And if there was a storm and stuff, there's no way a Buffalo bus is gonna be able to turn around on his driveway. Because he lives on a side hill. And half the time, whoever, the bus driver, they won't be able to turn around that. We're gonna have to back up all the way. I don't know where they're gonna turn around.
What they used to do before that road?
Go through that development.
Before the development?
Buffalo bus never, I have, I...
Buffalo bus was never down there. We didn't ever do Buffalo.
Oh, but what way were you used to?
I, I drove a bus back there since seventy-eight. I turned around and I drive it. And the township put a turnaround for me, but there's all these cars there now. And I'm really concerned for Roger, the bus driver, turning around on a side hill. There's a storm, and she, I don't wish to... Thank you.
Any more discussion on the roads? Well, let's move on to Montrose Day Celebration.
Jenny is here now?
Jenny Nelson here now?
So again, I'm Jenny Nelson, and you had asked me to come back to this meeting to give a report on how the refit went in the four days that we were given. And I'm really happy that the first morning class that we had, we had five women show up. And the second morning, we had seven. And that may not seem like a lot to you, but for a morning class in the middle of summer, that's, that's actually quite a few people. And then the Thursday class that had happened, we went from nine women to eleven women. So we had really good, positive feedback from people who are super fitness girls to people we had never met before. And so everybody seemed to feel really positive about the experience. And so I guess that's kind of my report, yes.
Andy, what is our, the legalities of that? Continue to let them use the community center?
Mayor Nelson, I, I looked at this question in the interim a little bit. And as you know, my, what I'm concerned, but the issue that I was running into was having some sort of use of this facility for no cost. Typically, it's only done when you, particularly the public benefit to doing that. And that's usually with nonprofit corporations and organizations and such. So that's, that's something that optimally that would be what you would want for. There's state statutes on this that don't allow your free use of a public facility to be done unless they fit within a certain criteria. And so we have to work with the group, I think, to get there, but I think that's doable. We just have to document it so you don't have a state auditor situation or something coming down the question. There are some situations in which we can embellish here, but that this center might not be otherwise used. And so when we have a group come in that draws people from the area, that could be a particularly public benefit. Because otherwise, it would be empty, even though the city's not getting revenue from that. So that's what we have to make sure.
Do you have any, can I talk to this off the top of your head, any of the specific guidelines that our group would need to...
Well, I, and I don't know what you have. I mean, you're a pretty loose pre-agglomeration of people, probably, wouldn't be so...
There's just the two of us at the moment.
Yeah, so you wouldn't really have a nonprofit entity. Yeah, I'm not saying you have to do that, but so I think you just have to talk to the council a little bit more and get more information on your schedule and...
Yeah, I actually, Laura wasn't able to make it tonight. She's Monday, unable to get up, so...
We have your contact information.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
How many of the, how many of the people that attended the, over the day and then the evening class were from the median area?
I mean...
Best to know?
To the best of my knowledge, I would say six-ish.
So about half?
I would say about half, yeah. There were some veterans, so to speak, from Howard Lake. There's a couple ladies who go to our DASL locations that they were happy to be able to come here. I know there's a lady who, she just recently moved back into the area and she's kind of based around here, and so she's able to come again. And so there isn't, just because it's based in Montrose, doesn't mean it's gonna be only Montrose. I mean, that would be my hope, would be drawing people from Montrose in. But there's also going to be people from Waymo and Waystep. And we pass out flyers to Buffalo even to hope that we really can get more, more people to come.
I was just trying to get a sense of...
I would say, off the top of my head, yes, about half-ish.
How do you measure the number of sports?
Appetizers? Normally, our classes are done via Facebook or emails sent out by Laura, who is the instructor. For this, for classes that we were giving to is here, we did flyers and Word of Mouth and the Facebook. We did have some trouble trying to peg the Montrose Community Center, so weren't able to do that very well. So I'm not sure what that was, but so normally, we try to use multiple. But Facebook generally tends to get the widest range. And then if someone asks, you know, I don't have that, can you email me your Facebook or something? And then we can kind of do that as well.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to Montrose Day Celebration.
Well, I should be sitting here. So the schedule's in here, all the activities. But the real reason to put it in here is for the parade. You guys are number four in the parade. You're all set up. I'm wondering if you're gonna take care of getting your own candy, how you wanna handle that this year?
You did a good job last year.
We need more tutsie rolls. Why don't you pick us up some candy to throw out so we get enough tutsie rolls?
Doing our marketing, you know? Who can you pick up a bag of? No, I don't even remember.
You, we all went to the Liza Vegas?
I bought those big bags.
They were fine, huh?
At least, yeah, I think I got two, I was one sorted and one bag of tutsie rolls. I don't remember. Okay, so you'll take care of that?
Yeah.
So you just, Sean will have a truck for you and... I don't, somebody should check with the driver, should check with Sean on the arrangements of the truck.
What's it, I think the mayor or...
The parade starts at one, so I think about twelve-thirty, you should be getting in the lineup.
Hello, too. Okay, then we're gonna move on to Truth and Taxation.
Yep, we need to set our date. The last several years have been done the same night as our December council meeting. We do it right after the consent agenda, if that's agreeable with the city council. I will publish that. It's the same night as our regular council meeting. Starts at seven P.M. Yes, is that all right?
That's fine, yes.
And special meeting, mail notices, discussion, memo discussion, and... Act you needed to motion to adopt Resolution twenty-fourteen dash eleven.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor of the Council, I was discussing with your city staff, the, a meeting here. And one of the things that, that was mentioned was the special meetings that you have from time to time. And as a part of the open meeting law, residents or anybody really can file a request with the city staff, requesting mail notice of a special meeting to them specifically. Normally, when you have a special meeting of council or county commissioner or other body, you have to post that notice within three days of that meeting, unless it's an emergency meeting. We've seen a number of emergency meetings with flood issues in some cities, five rivers. But anyway, you, you normally post that notice, but sometimes people get missed that notice. And so they file a request with you to receive mail notice of every single special meeting you have that you'll have. And that, so that's allowed in the open meeting law. Sometimes, and I've had this in other cities, too, it gets not necessarily time intensive, but sometimes those get slipped across. Those are hard to keep track of sometimes. And so state law allows you to set an expiration date on when somebody can get mailed notice. So for example, the example that I drafted for you in this resolution, every November first of every year, anybody's request to receive a special notice mailed to them would expire. And they need to be notified within sixty days of that November first date that, A, your, 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 your request to receive a special hearing notice, special meeting notice is gonna expire November first. If they don't respond to you, then that's one more thing off your list you're gonna have to deal with as a city staff to mail that notice out. So that was presented for your discussion. And it's really just kind of a housekeeping ease, ease of record keeping on city staff.
I'll make a motion then to adopt Resolution twenty-fourteen eleven.
I'll second that. I vote aye. Johnson?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Mark?
I vote aye. I'm going to carry by aye.
And we'll move on for Request for Council Action Policy Discussion, Barbara.
Yeah, I just wanted to, in your pack, and I put a couple things we've done over the past years. We use the Request for Council Action form, and sometimes people are really, they don't explain a great deal of detail what they want to talk to the city council about. And I just wanted to use this opportunity to make sure we all understand that when people are using that form, they really need to provide city council with adequate information. And if they don't, then I will contact them and ask them to provide additional information. So it's really helping us manage the council meetings better. So when the packets go out, the city council has a full understanding of what they're asked, being asked to do.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Open Form Policy Memo and Discussion, Andy.
Yes, Mayor, I put together for you a memorandum explaining what follows. And this is an open form document that you currently have. And so I have a red line, in red and color on your, on your printers, of the red line showing the changes that I have made to this document. And then what follows, it says on page sixty-one and sixty-three is the clean version tonight, made up of paragraphs. So sixty-one and sixty-three say the same thing, one's red line, one's the clean version. Then the memo starts on page sixty-nine. And this, this was, I was directed by your personal committee to draft this for the council meeting. Open form certainly is a staple in many cities. And I think all city councils want to hear from constituents on anything that's on the boards, as well as congratulations or constructive criticism or what have you. And so I'm sure this city's no different. But it is the city council's meeting, and you have the right to control the meeting and allow what is more appropriate. And there isn't an absolute First Amendment right to speak at a meeting. It's, of course, strongly encouraged that happens. But I think the, I think there's a goal for everybody to make that a respectful discourse between the council and, and public. And so I'm hoping that these provisions hit that intent. I bullet pointed the highlights of the changes to the open form policy. And these are encapsulated in the document beginning on page sixty-one. And basically, this is gonna serve, if you approve of these changes, the form on page sixty-three will serve as the form that people would fill out if they wish to speak in open form. And they would give that to Barbara or the mayor to, to speak. And those forms, sorry, I'm trying to find, oh, yeah. So there will certainly be a deadline for receiving those forms, so everyone who wants to get a chance to speak does. But it's on a form, so the council is aware of how to react to that. The staff can get some marching orders for things to look up or research or do. And using this form to have some blanks on copies to be presented, I think, I think assist city staff to do that in the future. Some other of the highlights here, I added back, putting in their full name and address upon reaching the podium. There are some people who are outside the city who want to speak out of the city, and that's important, definitely, for you to react to it, to make on the podium. Certainly, the city has policies and procedures that can go beyond your limits. And then sometimes you have, you know, an open form situation where someone is gonna request something of you at a data, a piece of data, and that's the course of Governor of the Data Fraxes Act. And I think the important point is we can't necessarily, A, give them the shit they've been looking forward to now, or B, tell them something that they want, because state law has limits. You, you have public data that can be shared, and that's, there's public that can't be shared by the city. And that there's, I can't speak just as a example, there's so many broad categories. So we want to make sure that you're not about the spot, and this is a form helps to do that by allowing us to do necessary research to be as responsive as we can with the data that's being asked for. There's also in, and this is up to you, there's many times the cities that have a time limit for how long an individual can address the council, with the intent to have as much time as possible for others who also want to speak. So three minutes is in here for proposal. And certainly, if the council wanted to grant speaker additional time, you could do so by majority vote. So I included that, that language in there. The next bullet talks about deviation from what is put on the open form form. And I, I guess my concern is your legal counsel would be that I don't want anyone to necessarily speak out of turn and then be wrong or, or something like that, and be called out later for that. But I think the point is just a way for information to be gathered and concerns to be noted. So that's, that's just what I want to be careful at on that point. Same thing with the next bullet, second to last bullet on page sixty. There's a lot of times that the council may not respond right away. Sometimes in other cities, they, they say that upfront, that we're not gonna respond tonight, we'll get back to, or staff will get back to in a week. If they respond, it's verbal. And lastly, I think it's, I think everyone would agree, it's important to not, open form shouldn't be a trial, informal corporate trial against somebody or signaling somebody out or getting heated. I don't think that's the, that's the form for that. So we're, we're certainly able to enforce... So we're, we're certainly able to enforce certain deterrents from speakers from doing that. We don't want to insert that, that to break down. So that's, that was the last concern there. And I think most of these concerns have been articulated in this form. Um, it's my thought that the, if you approve the revised open forum form, then it would be on the city's website for people to fill out and to hand in before the meeting or at the table, uh, where all the public documents are for them to fill out at the beginning of the meeting. And, uh, we could have a separate agenda of basically saying, now's the time to collect all the open forum documents and maybe go forward from there. I just think that, that helps the process a little bit to make sure it's not, it's not embarrassed and everyone can talk who wants to. Uh, I think I covered most, all of the red line documents or the red line part in, in the document here. But certainly let me know if you have any questions on this. I've taken this from my experience with some other cities as well. Haven't necessarily had problems with the open forum process, but just wanted to make it a little more transparent procedure, so that's the goal.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Mayor, Michelle, I second that then to approve, um, open forum policy. Roy, do you vote?
No.
Ben?
Aye.
Mark?
No.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote no. Motion, three two. Okay, we'll move on to city council decorum and discussion.
Do you want to start with that?
I guess I, I had everything in the open forum.
Pardon?
I guess I had everything in the open forum, fortunately.
Three, down on three two. Radio three.
Did you want to start with the, uh, part of the form?
Because I don't have anything on this point.
Uh, I guess it's left to me then. Um, under last staff meeting, I, that's two thing. It was discussed on council, uh, behaviors. I guess I could say, um, Ben, myself, Wendy, Roy, Andy were all present for that. And in the last, and looking back, I'm not sure how to proceed with this, um, looking back at different meetings, um, behaviors, myself including. I'm, I would like to just have a discussion with the council as to the mayor's behavior, towards city staff, council members within this, this general city. Just behaviors of the, of the mayor. Um, he has quite a bad reputation in our city at different businesses, um, mayor's conventions, newly elected officials, um, seminars. He has what, um, negative impact with Department of Health and different commissions that he's attended. There's just, it's just a pop, negative outcomings from the behavior of our mayor and I would like to have that discussion with the council and get their input on that. Ben?
You know, I, I know Roy and I had that discussion about what I experienced and it is a disappointment, you do hear that out in the public from other cities, city officials from other cities, that, you know, the, the reputation of our city isn't positive and isn't a positive outlook, which we shouldn't be trying to portray and put out there. It's something that I think that is very strong that we need to do. We need to have, and all five of us need to represent that where we go, represent a positive outlook for our city in what we're discussing and, and, you know, we do hear negative, someone is saying negative, we need to, you know, try and turn it around and, and change some, change it to the positive. Because I, I want our city to be known for positive things going on, you know, our regional park, um, you know, that we do have housing development going on, um, things of that nature versus when they hear city of Patros, you know, their, their first reaction is negative. And whether that be from what they've heard firsthand or experienced firsthand or what they've heard from, you know, whether it be hearsay. And I, I, you know, I'd like to see. I'd like to see it be that, you know, that we are portraying a positive message out there about our city.
For me, it's, it's kind of tough to go into a business here in town and hear how I am being criticized by the person, the one person that I was supposed to be totally representing our city. I am going to make a recommendation, you know, it's up for discussion with the council, that the mayor does not attend the chamber meeting. We find a replacement for that. That, I mean, he obviously hasn't attended the mayor's conventions. But it's, it's really like, like you say, it's really tough to go into an area in town where all, all we hear is negative. Whether it's being directed at city staff, you know, I, I even met with a citizen here in town two weeks ago, somebody I'd never met, they had some questions and concerns about, um, stuff within their area of their home. And they asked me if the mayor was still out to get the city staff. So I just, I, I feel it's, you know, I mean, we all have opinions and everything, but it's, it's just a constant negative impact on our city. And we have enough problems already and we can't fix those problems if we have our representation.
All right, Michelle, I'm going to tell you something. The only reason I haven't been attending any of these staff meetings because they're held in a bar in Waverly and all you hear is talk, talk, talk and nothing gets accomplished. That's why I have not been attending them. And I told Joe that at the bank and Joe at the bank agrees with me. What do you get accomplished in a bar? Nothing.
That, that's not what I'm talking about. What I'm saying is the meetings that you do attend, it's been, I attended last year's newly elected officials and it was, it was negative. Ben attended it this year. It's, it was negative comments that come from our mayor.
No.
You know, we got feedback from the, uh, Wendy, myself and Barb have worked a lot with the lady, well, not so much Wendy, but more so, um, the staff with the Department of Health. And she mentioned that she had discussed things with you and you, your comment was do not trust the city staff, don't go in.
I did not say that if you're talking about the state health inspector. I did not say that to her. She was supposed to mail me something over a week ago with the trailer park and all that stuff and I still do not have received it from her. So I don't know who's telling me what. And some of these people that are making accusations, when I go to their door and I question about it, oh, I didn't say that. What are you talking about?
You can discuss all you need to discuss, Roy, but sitting at a council meeting, you, it's, we're on record that you have no report and you want nothing to do with going up to city staff because you don't trust them.
That ain't what I said.
It's on record, but I'm not going to argue.
I trusted him. And what do you do? And to say to another, you know.
So, I mean, like I said, I, something needs to be done.
What?
However, the city, I mean, however, it must sort of continue.
What about you letting information out about our security, security of city, all until eleven thirty at night?
That's right. That's common knowledge of governmental building.
Oh, hey.
Yes, it is.
In security.
I'm not going to want to that.
I ain't either. I'm not arguing with nobody.
This is what I'm talking about. We're, we're trying to have a civil conversation to keep our city positive and then you turn it around and that's dependent on your staff.
See, you turn things around too, but I'm not arguing with you. And people I go to confront, they said we didn't say that. So I know, not arguing with nobody about nothing. As far as I'm concerned, let's move on to open forum and get Greg up here from the voice office.
Before we do that, I'll make the motion to remove Roy from the city chamber meetings and, um, planning and zoning. I'm not sure what else we need to plan. Maybe since Roy doesn't, and then, you know, I mean, we can discuss that too. You kind of, you, you have an agenda that has now costed the city a rough estimate of, uh, eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars that you started.
Yeah, I'm going to you started.
I took what it's, this goes back to the city's tax dollars. You took it upon yourself and council member Johnson to meet with our attorney to start an investigation upon city's, city staff, which that initial investigation, that is why we're changing all these policies so that that can't happen again. That first meeting that you conducted with our attorney, his first month here was three hundred and fifty dollars of the taxpayers' dollars, which with an end result of that was eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-three fifty that you conducted without council approval. City tax money, gone. Because of behaviors that you, you don't see fit. But if you would go and discuss things, that would have saved the taxpayers almost nine thousand dollars.
You don't come and discuss, I see you come to my house all the time and discuss everything and now you don't even know where my door is.
Because I know.
And your husband didn't even know that. When you got elected on the council, you both come over here and congratulated me for all the work I did to get you on the council. James, Roy?
I'm just saying, Roy, your behaviors are uncalled for and, um.
Well, I got a little, I got a little irate.
You're costing the taxpayers a lot of money.
I got a little irate at a few things, should I admit that?
Yep.
But I don't, I'm not saying no more.
Your irateness is costing nine thousand dollars on one incident.
And I don't think that got solved yet, you know, it's.
See, so, so you're going to conduct another one to spend more of taxpayers' dollars?
No, I'm doing something else.
I know, it's all around town.
Nobody in town. Talk about.
I'd like to.
Whoever's got, because I don't like what you do.
Since I was brought in.
We, 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 we got a motion on the floor. It's up to the council to really decide how much discussion you want to have here on this, whether it's a, you open it up or not. I mean, it's part of your, I don't have a second either.
Actually, but you changed, that's why you support it not all. When I heard what he said about my wife and the names, the name calling, I'm asking for him referring, I've decided not to associate with him anymore. He's left this whole merit and gone to his head.
And call nobody no names, Jim.
I confronted you on it, you didn't deny it.
At least the way I'm lying here, I don't think we need to go any farther, any place with this. If, unless there's your motion, and your motion to me seems incomplete because, um, if you wanted to remove him, replace him with who?
I mentioned, um, councilman Johnson, since he doesn't do anything else, mainly we could quote him on something. He doesn't hand in a form, he sits up here and maybe get him more involved, I don't know.
Do, do you, do you want, do you want, I'm asking you, do you want to be more involved with some of these meetings, Mr. Johnson?
Well, yeah, but everybody else has got everything.
Well. I'm saying either financing, you want, you want the chamber, chamber meetings? What are they?
Thursdays. See, this is, you're sitting there saying that chamber meetings are jokes, that's the negative.
Okay, Michelle, and I'm telling you, you said it at Uptown Bar, where are you going to discuss when you've got people sitting around you talking and all that stuff? You can't discuss nothing.
Right, have you discussed maybe changing it?
We used to have it here at the community center and we had all kinds of people coming all the time. But since it got changed at the Uptown Bar and that stuff, we don't get nobody anymore. We used to have early come and a lot of the Uptown.
But then in return, Roy, have you made a suggestion to change it, move it, have it? Instead you sit, okay, but you told Joe, but there's, I don't want to have it here on a chamber, but instead you sit and say the whole chamber is a joke. And that's the negative for listening to you talking, you can't do that.
Waverly Cafe don't want us to do with the chamber anymore. Nothing. That's why they pulled that matter out of down here and went to Waverly Cafe. Sarah and Emmy said they're done with it. They want nothing to do with it anymore. So they hired this, they hired this person to, well, we just start doing something, he's on it right now.
I'm making a motion to remove him if you are willing to take him.
I think you need a second for this motion or else the discussion's going to end here. Do you want any discussion?
So Michelle, your, your motion, if I stand corrected, is to remove Roy from the chamber and replacing him with Mr. Johnson, is that, is that correct?
That's, that's wasn't the motion. You're, you're changing the motion, huh?
I'm asking.
She said she wanted to excuse Roy from the chamber and also what the, uh, planning and zoning, there's nothing mentioned about Roy Johnson, so.
No, no, I'm, I'm just asking what, what clarification of what her motion is. That's, that's what I was asking. I'm, I'm not putting words in your mouth, I'm just asking for clarification because it did, uh, very abruptly kind of get a little loose there. So I'm just asking for clarification of what her motion is.
My argument, that is my little point, is to remove Roy and replace him with another council member with possibility of Mr. Johnson. Or even go back to actually maybe go back to having Barb. Barb was our, um, Barb attended all chamber meetings, so we went back to Barb. We're getting no feedback from any of the meetings. We've gotten nothing on any of the, from.
Because nothing has been discussed. I talked to Joe at the bank two weeks ago and he said nothing's been going on.
Please move the motion.
Again, my motion is to remove Roy from his liaison chamber and replacing him with another member, Barb or.
Don't, don't, don't put any of those on.
That's fine.
I'll second that motion. Before, before having first, before that, yes.
Motion by Michelle, second by Ben. Johnson, do you vote?
No.
Otto?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
I vote no. Ben?
Aye.
Motion carried. Motion carried, three two. Okay, let's move on to Greg of the Boy Scouts. First, I'd like to thank you, you're welcome, Melissa, and thank you for the use of the community center and for taking, for the beyond Michelle Rubin kickoff meeting, your support for this program is essential and very much appreciated, thank you, wonderful.
Mayor, Council, I'm Greg Newman with the Boy Scouts, through three twelve of Montrose here. Um, I wanted to talk again in reference to some concerns that I have with regard to the access to the Boy Scout and their warming hut located here in Lyons Park. Um, some history is appropriate in reference to that, uh, circa nineteen ninety, year or take, I'm not sure that three days might come into Montrose. Uh, there was a need to upgrade the Boy Scouts concession stand and also need to have a city warming hut for the ice skating rink. The Boy Scouts donated funds, uh, since they could not own real property for the purpose of securing a building to be raised, the garage to be raised. And they also were involved in moving that to its current location and then the, yes, Barb?
Maybe I can tell you what happened. Um, the city bought a house, it was owned by, Bach was the last name and the garage was there, the city purchased it and moved it onto a concrete slab and then used it for warming house and later then the Boy Scouts got, got involved in it.
Yes, I understand that they donated funds to the city for the purpose of refacing that building for the purpose it is now, is that correct?
I don't, I don't recall that, but that could have.
That's, that's my understanding, they had substantial input as far as the, the possibility. Um, there was also verbal agreement at that time that the Boy Scouts would be able to use that for meetings and other purposes and also be able to use that for a, um, concession for the Montrose days. And then the city would be able to use the front of that building for a warming hut. Typically, and it was historically, the, the Boy Scouts were given notification if there was going to be public access to the building. And that way we could go ahead and remove any equipment that we had in the front public portion of the building, either the secure area, even the back of the building is secured by a deadbolt. And the city does have keys to the building, obviously, it's a city building and they should have access to it, they granted us that courtesy notification so that we could move our property or make a determination whether that was needed, since some of that property is difficult to move, um, and it's real tight in that back room. Since Charlie was as fast away, that notification has either been disregarded or no longer happening, so we didn't get notification. And I was notified through word of mouth or third party that there were several accesses to that building, which we had no knowledge of. Uh, in fact, Jason had said something to some of, they let several people into that building. And there were several comments that were made that I got back third party, that there were concerns about the building, so I wanted to talk with you about that and find out what those concerns were and be able to air that right here if we had time to do that. The other thing that concerns me is as to, uh, whether or not we're going to be given a notification of public access as to the insurance um, that is covering the building as far as the property that's in there. Again, we have several thousand dollars with equipment that's in there as far as replacement cost and then also right now it's about two thousand dollars with hamburger in there for the Montrose days event. Um, I talked with Wendy at the city today and she let me know that the city does have minimal liability coverage of the building, which might cover, but not sure whether that would cover some of the contents, probably the fixed product of property within the, in the building. Uh, that would be, be the, the heater that's in the building, but probably nothing else. The other question I had made before Lee represented is whether or not the agreement the city has with the Boy Scouts would constitute a tenant landlord relationship that we might be able to secure renters insurance to cover that property that's within the building. And that would be something I'd like to know from the city, whether or not that is a tenant relationship. The other issue is that, if I understand, if only one person has keys and that is as far as the, the city, that one person has keys, that, I believe that's Jason, if I'm not mistaken, at least that's what I was told. Uh, but there's no key control for that key as far as I understand. Um, and then the last thing I'd like to talk about is, right now, the locks to that building are a little bit loose and probably are in need of replacement. The Boy Scouts are willing to wait and replace those locks and give the city a key to that, that door, uh, but we would, uh, not give the key to the secure area of the building as long as it's okay with the city, unless that's maintained in the city building and not given out to other people, that's where we keep, uh, the majority of property. Thank you.
So you just want to have, um, fix the locks, have a key with Jason?
And be notified as to any public access to the building.
Okay.
Okay? Um, and I have the notification for you for the Boy Scouts, because you don't have that anymore, before it went through Charlie.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
What do you consider public access?
Public access is anyone other than the city going in there and having free access.
There was nobody else in the building but the city.
But what I was told was that, and, and you told me that only the city was in there.
Yeah.
Because I understand it, uh, Jason had said something to, to Mayor Henry, that there were several people in there at several different times, so I don't know what's going on with that, but I'm getting different stories from different sides, so.
Because the only one that, that I know that was in there was Barb, myself, Sean.
Okay.
I was in there.
Oh, and you were in it, that's.
That was at a different time.
Yeah, that's all that was in there, so I, yeah. If somebody else was in there, I, we don't know about it, so.
Yeah, that's, that's my concern. And then the other thing, in the past, when we had the, uh, the national night out, we've actually gone ahead and let them use the, the refrigerators and what have you in there for the, for securing the, uh, the meat and what have you as they need to do. And let them use the building, we don't have a problem with that. And what they do that with, with the national night out, that's fine.
No, we see this one.
Yeah, so, I mean, I have no problem with that. But my real concerns are, uh, with the agreement that's there, there's no notification clause in the agreement and perhaps that should be added as something to the agreement, that there be a notification to the tenant, because we, if there's going to be public asset, access. And also, is there whether that constitutes a tenant relationship as far as insurance issues, so that we can secure proper insurance as necessary in the event that the city insurance does not cover that.
Sure, it, it does not cover that, I, we just have eighteen hundred dollars in liability, so.
Yeah.
You know, if you've got five thousand dollars worth of stuff and we're far cry, so we knew there'd be damage. But I think that your idea of a lease kind of thing, so you can get renters insurance, which is much less expensive, is, uh, probably a good idea and I'm sure Andy can help us with that.
I would think that the, related to the agreement that we have now would constitute a tenant relationship, I just copy the agreement.
I just get on her.
Okay. Ben?
Can I say something, please? Um, when the, when the, you know, Montrose Softball Association used to run the association at the ball field, we had that lease agreement with them and it was like, they paid rent of like a dollar a year or something to make it constituted as a lease and that way they could insure all their stuff, so, you know, I don't know what's possible, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'd like to find out about that and to have the, the city respond to me in reference to that. And the other thing I'd like to, to do is to have an amendment or a motion for amendment to the current agreement that we be notified in event of any public access.
Sure, I, yeah, I, I don't know why you wouldn't be, you know, except for the fact that we might not have very good contact information for you, so, yeah.
Just to clarify, the public access of the meeting?
Public access of the meeting, uh, anyone other than the city having access to the building.
Which we, which nobody else would have a key, so.
No, yeah, but we would certainly, I certainly appreciate.
Yeah, but that's usually the warning, the city certainly wouldn't be there all the time, it's open.
No, we have a, a warning house for a lot.
I know, that's what happened for a long time.
I think that's a reasonable request.
So, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Do you have any other additions?
Uh, I, I want to acknowledge, I know Wendy did have the, you know, the Boy Scouts and her, Lyons and everybody for National Night Out, but I want to acknowledge that, uh, Barb, Mark, Jesse, Wendy, myself, um, didn't ask for my thoughts, I want to make those guys that came up at Montrose.
Yeah, I want to thank Barb and you two for all their copying, getting all that stuff secured and it'd be easier for us to just handle the ice cream.
I'd like to acknowledge Pat for doing some of the parking benches, painting them and replacing the two by fours and stopping them in the event of, and towards Lyons Park, fixing the vacant tables.
I'd like to acknowledge Jerry Lamb for his service to the planning position.
And Danielle, so, for the chairman.
I'd like to thank the members of Montrose State Celebration Committee for their work and diligence in, uh, putting together another good Montrose State Celebration that we have coming up here again this weekend.
For the Boy Scouts, Lions, by the purpose?
List them all.
Is that it?
Has somebody to one second?
Lyons?
Lyons. They're all headed. Lyons, that's just me.
Motion, Woodger?
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Ben, motion by Mark, seconded by Ben, good here. Johnson?
Aye.
Otto?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.